... When it's all spinning, sometimes you can, I don't want to mess this up now, but you can double-click this and you get the shadow down there.
Station two.
Okay. Well, no, thank you. I appreciate it. Do you want me to try to get that up for you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
I know he was there for a while. I didn't know if he was still there.
Just in case Gil says something.
She's usually the one saying stuff.
Why does it always mean?
I'm gonna throw Wayne under, but I'm comfortable with you.
I heard she needed to be thrown under.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call the February 16th, 2016 PCOSA School Board Meeting to order. Andrew.
Good evening. Our pledge leader tonight is Nick Gibson. Nick is an eighth grader at PCOSA Middle School. He enjoys karate and piano, which he taught himself how to play. His goal that he has set for himself going into high school is to take at least three AP math classes.
Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Nick. Our inspirational reader tonight is Emma Schwarting. Emma is a sixth grader at PCOSA Middle School. She is a member of Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Yearbook, and Girl Scouts. She plays basketball, likes to paint, and enjoys riding her bike. Emma has been to Honduras four times on mission trips.
"Go confidently in direction of your dreams. Live your life you've imagined. As you simplify your life in the laws of the universe, we'll be simpler." By Henry David Thoreau.
Thank you very much. Tonight, the sixth grade students from Tech Ed will be displaying their wind turbines. Seventh and eighth grade students at Tech Ed will be discussing their use of White Box Learning, a standards-based STEM learning system. Students participating will be Olivia DeNono, Riker Metz, Emma Schwarting, Philip Lombardi, Louis Dina, Max Smith, Ella de Santiago, I am so sorry, Bailey Green, and Nick Gibson. Please, when I come out to visit with you, correct me if I mispronounced your names. But, students, when you come up afterwards, we're gonna take care of a little bit of business after you do your presentation. We'd like you to stay with us, and then we're gonna come out and visit with you when we take a break. Thank you. Come on up.
This is how a wind turbine walks. So, inside, there's a generator that, um, it's turned by the rod, the low-speed shaft, which is, has a high-speed shaft, and it turns this, which turns the generator, and sends electricity to the power lines. When the wind turbines produce energy, they go to the thing that makes more energy, then it goes to the generator, then it's carried by the power lines. So, there's different shapes of generators. Like, this one is an egg-beater shape, so, and it's not as big as the other ones are, and it rotates this way instead of the other way. This is how we made the turbine. So, first, we had to color and assemble the wind turbine, and we just colored. The wind turbines are a kit that the stu-, so, we had these kits, and we would take the pieces out and color them, then we hot glued them together, and then we colored the wings, and, yeah. So, this is the first piece of the wind turbine. We hot glued it together, we hot glued this form to the stand, and then we put on the motor. This is what it looks like when the fins are glued to the hub. Now, when it's finished making it, we started testing. First, we did it with the fins flat, then we tested it with the fins cupped.
Um, today, we have the White Box Learning for the glider section. In order to make a glider, we have to go through the research section. It shows everything you need to know how to build a glider. The engineering section is where you actually build the glider itself. Um, the fuselage is pretty much the base of the glider. The wing is the wing. The horizontal stabilizer is the sta-, um, kind of the wing in the back, and the vertical stabilizer is the other wing in the back. After you finish completing your glider, you can go to the competition and compete with your classmates. This is Nick, straight here, and this is our, the top contestant in our class. Um, well, top contestant won. Next, um, the output is to see if your plane had the specifications to fly, which, this was just a sample, so it didn't have what it needed to fly, so it could not, um, fly in the competition. And the build and test, you can do that at home, and we actually did this in our classroom, and we made the wings for, in the woodshop. But this, in this tutorial, you can build it with the full, the base, the vertical stabilizer, and the fuselage at your home. But we would put these in the wind tunnels to fly and compete with our classmates again. And, that's it.
Hello, this is, uh, a seventh grade Tech Ed or Inventions and Innovations class. We designed the Dragster 2.0 and the White Works, White Box Learning program, so, yeah.
Um, and here we are, wait.
All right. Well, uh, this is the engineering part of the White Box Learning, where you actually build and create your Dragster. So, you can build the top profile, the bottom profile, which is the bottom and top of the car. You can shape it however you want, to be skinny, small, large, you know, tall, anywhere you want, whatever you want to do, you can do it with this program. Um, then you can add all the wheels and axles and, you know, different things like that to match what a real Dragster would be. That's basically all we did.
And then, when you're done, you can take it in competition with other classmates. It'll take a while. Takes a little while to load, it's kind of...
Oh, wait, just a second, folks, I'm going to try to fix this. Give me just a second. Here we go. Oh, and this is what the car's supposed to look like when you finish. Let's just open Rev, and then when that happens, we can... And at the end, a car should look like this, where it's all curved, and you can add the wheels and color it. And then, when you're done, you can go to competition, and when you do that, there's qualifiers out of spec, which, you can see, there's a lot of people that happen there. Qualifiers are the people that are in spec, the people that actually made their car, and it's not under any... How would I put this? If the car is distorted and not looking like a regular car, that would go in here. But, we're going to race any of these cars, which, let's race my car. Whoa! And then, the fastest car, because let's see who's gonna win, I wonder who. And then, we just click start, and same thing as the gliders, it's just a race. And you can see who's the fastest, and then it's going to hit a, a finish line, and when that finish line gets hit, whoever goes first wins. We've actually had, in our class, two people that have tied in the exact same time, so no one won, and you can see, wow, the fastest person got first, I wonder why. But that's pretty much our cars. Yay! And this is what a car looks like when you finish.
Thank you very much. I hope I'm not regret asking this question, but is this fun?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Great. I love it. Please hang with us just a little bit, we'll have a couple of recognitions, but are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, now we'll move to recognitions.
And while Mr. Cast is heading over to the podium, I'd like to ask Denise Hernandez to come forward, please. We are honoring Denise as our Volunteer of the Month this evening, and I believe in the audience with her, we have her husband Jorge Hernandez and her children Haley and Jacob. Mrs. Denise Hernandez has a sixth grade student Jacob at the middle school and a ninth grade student Haley at the high school. She is currently serving as volunteer coordinator for the fourth consecutive year and the eighth grade celebration coordinator for, coordinator for the second consecutive year for the middle school PTO. She volunteers with the library events, honor roll ice cream social, celebration of the arts, and the dances hosted by the library and the PTO. In addition to the PMS PTO, she is also serving this year as a secretary for the PHS PTO. But it was her six years on the PES PTO board as Festival of the Arts Coordinator and Spirit Week Coordinator that prepared her for her current middle school and high school volunteering. So, please join me in thanking Ms. Hernandez for all the volunteer work she's done at our schools and continues to do at our schools during the course of... I could not do it without support from people like you. Next, I'd like to ask Daniel Tyler to come forward, please. We're recognizing Daniel this evening for being the February Senior of the Month. Daniel is a member of the National Honor Society and the Spanish Honor Society, and he currently serves as the varsity co-captain for the Scholastic Bowl, the vice president for the Leo Club, and the president for Model United Nations. He earned the silver medal for the national Spanish exam in grades nine and 10, was named an AP Scholar with Distinctions in grades 10 and 11, and was awarded the Outstanding AP Psychology Student designation during the last school year. This young man has also attended the summer residential program at the University of Virginia and has participated in our school's exchange program with the Czech Republic. Outside of academics, he has an outstanding community service record, having volunteered well over 400 hours at a number of locations, including Riverside Regional Medical Center, the Virginia Living Museum, and the PCOSA Public Library, where he also served as a member of the Teen Advisory Board. He has been accepted to William &amp; Mary for the Fall, where he plans to begin working toward a medical doctorate in psychology. Please join me in congratulating Daniel Tyler, our February Student of the Month.
Now, we're gonna take that short break.
Are you sure? You sure?
We're all in the back.
Just in time for daddy to announce that he's gonna, he stopped driving and he can't, he is. Everybody is a team of four cars, you know? It's okay. Keeps him on the drive.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Um, Mr. Bowen, could you come forward and give us the financial update, please?
Good evening Chairman Cast, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. Just a few quick updates for the finance report this evening. Staffs continue to work on the budget while we wait for the money committees from the House and the Senate to complete their work. We understand this will take place on, they'll complete their work on the 21st, and then the Department of Education will release calc tool, calculation tools on their respective budgets, and at that point, we'll know if there's any meaningful or significant changes to the governor's proposed budget. In addition, this evening, I wanted to share with you and the community a brief video about the state reductions in K-12 funding. This video was prepared by the Urban Crescent of Virginia with the assistance of Fairfax County. And for those of you not familiar, the, the Urban Crescent is comprised of 56 counties and cities. It's kind of a, a navigational arc of, so to speak, starting Northern Virginia, working its way down to Richmond and into Hampton Roads. And it's these 56 counties and, and cities that represent about 70% of all schoolchildren in, in the state of Virginia. So with that, if we can show the video.
The Commonwealth of Virginia is ranked in the top 10 for wealthiest states in the nation. Yet we are ranked in the bottom 10 in terms of how much we spend on education for our children. State funding for public education has been reduced by $1 billion since fiscal year 2009.
Localities, school divisions, businesses, and chambers of commerce in the Urban Crescent all realize the significance of state funding for education. Large and small localities alike have been struggling with reduced funding for many years. State funding on a per pupil inflation-adjusted basis has decreased from $4,275 per pupil in fiscal year 2009 to $3,655 per pupil in fiscal year 2015. Local governments are contributing double the amount required under current statute for public education, even as property values have significantly declined. According to the Virginia Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, in 2012, Virginia was the 35th-ranked state in per pupil funding and was ranked 41st in 2015. In order for Virginia to compete in national and global economies, adequate state education funding needs to be a priority.
The question is, how the continued decline in K-12 funding impacts local governments? Difficult choices. Social services, police, fire protection, utilities, these are the entities in our cities that are competing with our schools. It's placing additional stresses on our limited local funds. The lack of adequate state funding places undue stress on local jurisdictions to make up the difference.
Quality education is not a luxury, it's an absolute necessity. The future of our community, our county, and our entire state is dependent upon the quality of our public schools. So as we look to the future, we know that we have to continue to sustain great schools in every community throughout the Commonwealth, and we can no longer do that without additional support from the state. The ability to have great teachers in every classroom, the ability to be competitive with pay, the ability to provide the academic supports that our students need as educational needs of our students are growing are so important. The future of our community, the future of our county, the future of our state will depend upon these important decisions.
A quality K-12 public education system is a critical part of a high-quality community. The Urban Crescent leaders within Virginia have come together, representing government leaders, representing business leaders, representing school division leaders, and we're very proud of the fact that over 100 of those individuals have signed on to a letter stressing the importance of K-12 public education to the future of Virginia's economy and the quality of life of our communities.
High-quality K-12 education is an absolute imperative to the success of businesses in the Commonwealth, and successful businesses equal growth, and growth equals economic prosperity. We in the business community are striving every single day to set the conditions so that those businesses can be a success. Good, quality education is absolutely key to that success.
We implore our General Assembly members to increase funding for K-12 education. It is the most important step in securing a brighter future and a brighter economy for all Virginians.
The Urban Crescent of Virginia, with 70% of the Commonwealth's children, stands united in support for increased education funding in the next biennial.
So, we at school divisions, we've been talking about this since 2009. What I really like about this video is that we have our localities, our regional planning district commissions, and our chambers of commerce who now stand with the school divisions and united with this message. But I believe we can still go another step further. And what I'd like to say to the community this evening is that the General Assembly is still in session. It's not too late to contact our representatives and tell them that it's time to restore the $1 billion in cuts that was mentioned in this video. It's very important. For more, for more information about how to contact representative, go to VirginiaGeneralAssembly.gov. It has the email and phone numbers for all 140 members of the General Assembly. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bowen?
I have a question. Do you have an idea of how much money Pecosin has lost from state funding? Just, it doesn't have to be exact.
Um, I can tell you from our SOQ funding alone, our initial in 2010 was 2.1 million. We started to see some of that come back through re-benchmarking, through the re-benchmarking process, but some significant reductions were made in that 2010 year, particularly in, in relation to support cost, where we lost, as, as a state, $735 million in funding.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm assuming the Urban Crescent paid for and produced that video?
Yes.
Do you know how they raised money to pay for those things?
If I can interrupt, I'm not sure if they did, or Fairfax County Public Schools, they actually helped them do it, so it might have been the school division may have just funded the production of that because it was done up in Fairfax, and they have their own TV station, so.
Right, okay. Do you, do you know if it's been shared in any format with the General Assembly?
That, I don't know. It, it is making its way through, through various educational channels. The Virginia Association of School Business Officials has disseminated, I understand, VAS, Association of School Superintendents has disseminated, so it's working its way through.
Can I add something, Mr. Chairman? Also, the, the video of the Urban Crescent meeting, I believe, is on YouTube.
Yes.
So you can go on there and search it. It's quite lengthy, but it's quite interesting. And the letter that was distributed to the General Assembly is, I don't know if it's on our website, but it is on other locality websites if people want to read the actual letter. I know Chairman Cast signed it and our superintendent signed it. It's important to read. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
It's great, thank you. And the governor is, in a lot of his speeches, is using almost the exact language, is, you know, apparently he has seen it, or he has gotten the facts straight. So, thank you very much. Mr. Pappas, can you come share the operations update, please?
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Cast, Dr. Parrish. Since our last update, all PCPS bus drivers and bus aides participated in the second required in-service training. This in-service training focuses on driver skills through training medium to enhance their driving safety, and that was a big success. In the area of maintenance, Pecosin Elementary School lost power over the weekend. That outage created issues for PCPS technology and other building systems. Maintenance IT staff worked together to identify the impacted areas, and we're still working through that. In the area of safety, PMS maintenance staff have been participating in various trainings provided by our VML Insurance. Most recently, they conducted, or excuse me, participated in and concluded a safety training on gas appliances in the school. Next week, they will be participating in electrical safety seminar, again, in the form of a web, webinar. All PCPS administrators received individualized training at their school on the updated camera system software, and I think that was very well received by all, and as you know, we received that equipment and the software through our grant. And that concludes the operations report.
Any questions for Mr. Pappas?
I have a question. I believe the tornado drill is coming up. Are we participating in that in March?
We've been participating every year, for the last several years since, yes, we will be participating, as we do for the Great Shakeout, which is the earthquake drill.
Thank you.
The Great Shakeout.
That's what they call it.
Any other questions? Learned something tonight. Thank you very much. Dr. Colley, would you give us an instructional update, please?
Yes. Good evening Chairman Cast, members of the board, Dr. Parrish. I have a variety of instructional updates for you this evening. Last month, you approved the program of studies for the 2016-17 school year, and our middle school and high school students and families are busy reviewing courses and meeting with school counselors to make requests for the fall. I want to personally thank our families for reviewing these course selections carefully and for attending these very important meetings. As Mr. Pappas did mention, technology and power outages over the weekend did impact online registration. These issues have been resolved, and online course selection and registration at the high school has been extended through this Thursday. Middle school online registration will continue as scheduled through February 22nd. Related to course registration, I'm happy to announce that summer school registration opens this Friday, and information related to summer school is located on the division's webpage and on both the middle school and the high school webpages. Families may access the registration forms online, turn them in with payment to the middle school or the high school main offices. The final bit of registration news in our schools comes from the primary school. Last week, the primary school held kindergarten registration for the fall. Rising kindergarten students and their families registered, signed up for screening, toured the school, shared a story and snack, made a craft, and even got to take home a new book to read before coming to school this fall. We registered 81 kindergarten students last week, but we suspect there may be more rising kindergarten students in the community. So, if any of our families missed kindergarten orientation, we encourage them to drop by the primary school anytime during school hours to register. I'll also call your attention to one other important instructional activity in our schools next month, and that's the upcoming SOL writing test. Students in grade eight will take their SOL writing tests on March 22nd and 23rd, and students in grade 11 will take their writing tests on March 15th and March 16th. Teachers and students are both busy writing, analyzing writing, and preparation for this statewide program. As always, our students and teachers are working hard. I thought you might also like to know that we have eight projects represented in the Tidewater Science and Engineering Fair to be held at ODU Saturday, March 12th, including one project from the middle school. We also have seven Odyssey of the Mine teams competing, three from the elementary school, three from the middle school, and one from the high school in the regional competition to be held Saturday, March 19th at the Grafton Complex in York County. At a school board meeting later this year, I'll share more information about spring SOL testing. In the meantime, thanks for letting me share these updates with you tonight, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions? Dr. Colley, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Melton, can you lead us through the consent agenda, please?
Okay, for our consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of financial reports enclosed, approval of personnel action enclosed, authorization to change appropriation in accordance with attached request enclosed, and the approval of minutes from the January regular meeting and work session enclosed.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Can one of you give a second?
One of us will second.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions? Can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, moving on to other business, approval of minutes of public forum on the budget on January 29th, and those minutes are enclosed. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion about the budget hearing? Can we get a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to tell you that it's National School Board Breakfast Week, March 7th through 11th, and...
School Board Breakfast?
School Breakfast.
School Board Breakfast, I'm liking it better all the time.
I was trying to get...
Got Al's hopes off.
Thanks for, thanks for correcting me, I was wanting breakfast. And I have a proclamation where I'm going to read parts of it. Whereas over 8 million students in the United States participate in the National School Breakfast Program, and whereas students have shown that access to nutritious programs such as the National School Lunch Program and National School Breakfast Program helps to create a strong learning environment for children and helps to improve children's concentration in the classroom, and whereas students who eat a complete breakfast have shown to make fewer mistakes and work faster in math exercises than those who eat a partial breakfast. And there's some other wonderful things that go along with National School Breakfast Week, but now therefore be it proclaimed on this 16th day of February in the year 2016 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that the week of March 7th through the 11th be hereby celebrated as National School Breakfast Program Week in all Pecosin city public schools and among all board members. And also, I'm happy to announce that it's Career and Technical Education Month now in February. And whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of today's workplace, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, whereas career and technical education provides students with a career pathway for post-secondary education and workplace readiness, and is the foundation of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 16th day of February 2016 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin that the month of February be hereby celebrated as Career and Technical Education Month. And tonight, we had a great presentation from Career and Technical Education Classroom, and they, they did, classrooms, and they did a wonderful job. Do we have a motion to approve these proclamations?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any comment about these proclamations? Can we get a vote, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Coming soon, I'm going to ask school board members to read these proclamations. Do we have, um, let me see, how about communication? Dr. Parrish, can you start us off?
Yes, I just want to follow up with Mr. Bowen's presentation to any of you who are out in the viewing audience to encourage folks to contact our legislators. As Mr. Bowen said, we're still waiting for the budgets to come out of the money committees, and then we'll have the Budget Conference Committee that will meet before the General Assembly votes to approve a budget. So if folks are willing to, if they could contact, our delegate is Delegate Helsel, and our senator is Senator Norman, just to express your support for additional funding for K-12 education. And I also want to take a moment just to say thank you to our board members. It is also School Board Appreciation Month, so we want to thank you. I am doing so on behalf of the entire school division for the time that you give to us at the meetings and also attending other events and working through issues with members of our school division. So thank you, because it is a tireless job for you all, and we're not able to give you much in return for all your time, but please know that we really appreciate it. We're very fortunate to have you as board member, so thank you for the work that you do for the children in our community.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we're going to start off with the primary school. Just know that we have a copious amount of activities and achievements for all of our schools, so we have lots to be proud of here in Pecosin. So, at the primary school, they celebrated the 100th day of school today. So, throughout the day, they had many activities. The staff randomly would serenade students with 100 seconds of karaoke. Students counted and counted, yeah, counted and grouped 100 items brought from home, buttons, rocks, paperclips, and periodically through the day, students would stop and do physical activity, 100 jumping jacks, 100 toe touches, jogging place for 100 seconds. And also, teachers' names were put in a raffle for random objects like 100 grand candy bar and all the way to 100 Post-it notes or 100 paperclips. Also, at the primary school, they had the kindergarten registration, February 8th and 9th. Moving on to the elementary school, the fifth graders delivered a swashbuckling musical called Pirates the other week, and they charged admission with a canned food item for the food closet. Also, at the elementary school, the second quarter awards, award ceremonies were postponed. Were supposed to be on Friday, they were postponed to this upcoming Friday, the 19th, due to the half-day on Friday. Moving on to the middle school, tonight is the Book Fair Family Night until 7:00 PM, so you got about 20 minutes. Battle of the Classes is Thursday night, and Thursday night at 6:30 in the gym, so come and watch the 6th grade versus 7th grade versus the 8th grade in a PTO co-sponsored event. Online registrations at the middle school will close February 22nd. The 6th grade students will be taking a field trip to Jefferson Lab on February 23rd. The spring fundraiser for the middle school begins March 1st, and progress reports for those students who receive Ds, Fs, and incompletes will be mailed home March 4th. Moving on to the high school. So, March Madness is coming to Pecosin. Our annual student faculty game will be held Tuesday, March 8th at 6:00 PM, but this is not just for students. This is a time where the community can come together to support the PHS PTA fundraiser and spirited night of fun for the students and faculty of PHS. Playoffs will be between grade levels, and will determine the class that earns the privilege to play the faculty. So, and that will be the final game of the night. The games are designed for maximum participation of all students, so I believe any student can sign up to play for their grade level. Tickets at the door will be $5, but students can purchase tickets in advance for $4 during lunch for several days leading up to the event. Our sports marketing class is handling these pre-sales and the promotions at school for this event, and a concession stand will be open. Tryouts for spring sports will begin February 22nd, 2016. All students who have a physical on file, you have to have a physical on file to try out. The 11th grade writing SOL will take place March 15th and 16th, and the makeup dates will be March 17th and 18th. This past week, students had the opportunity to go online and request classes for the upcoming school year. In the next few weeks, students will meet with their counselors to work on their schedule for the upcoming school year. Registration for AP testing has started. Students should make sure to get in their applications to the guidance office no later than Friday, March 4th, and each of those tests costs, I believe, $92. The PHS After-Prompt Committee is having a Paint Night fundraiser on Wednesday, February 24th, 2016, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Anna's Pizza in Pecosin. The cost will be $40, and payment must be made by February 22nd to the PHS PTA. PHS is currently offering review sessions in English and math for the SAT for, on March 5th, 2016. This is the new SAT. Please review, these review sessions are free to all students, and students should try to come to these because they are very, they're very good, they're very productive. I've been to a couple, and I believe they help. You can sign up in the guidance office if you are interested. Also, our PHS Scholastic Bowl team, Daniel Tyler was a co-captain of that, and won champ, won the regional championship, first place regional championship, and will be competing at state's competition at the end of the month at William &amp; Mary. And a good job to all of our student athletes who have been very successful in this winter sports season. That's all I have for you tonight, so.
Andrew, I'll give you a grade of 100 on the approximately 100 items that you presented tonight. Thank you very much. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to express appreciation to Mr. Tom Jones and his staff at the city's Department of Public Works. Understand that during the recent snowstorms, they have been out of their way to help keep the roads clear of snow to help ensure safe transportation for our students and employees. And I know those folks are greatly burdened, and they have very limited resources, so their efforts are much appreciated and commendable. And Ms. Lena Reimers, your efforts in support of keeping us running smoothly on the school board are commendable as well, and much appreciated. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
No comment.
Ms. Whitaker?
Nothing.
Mr. Holcomb?
No comment.
Mr. Melton?
Wow, it'll make, okay, I'll, I'll take a couple of your spare ones in, because I have three comments, and I'd like to thank Ms. Sally Lovell and her students for coming out and talking about the wind turbines, the gliders, and the dragsters. For a second there, I thought we were, we're farmers, because I heard a lot of ham over there, I thought, with a couple of those presentations, but I enjoyed them nonetheless. Real Men Read is coming up in March, and I'm looking forward to that, particularly coming to the primary school, where I hope I can read the book I donated, Splat the Cat Sings Flat, and hopefully I'm going to be able to come and read that to the students in March. And in the Beth Ann tradition of having a quote for the purpose of supporting teachers and the praise of our outstanding teachers here in Pecosin from Lewis Shimer once again, "The purpose of teaching is to instill in all students genuine, loving, lifelong eagerness to learn and foster a life of continual growth and development. It should encourage and assist students in developing the basic values needed for learning and living, self-discipline, self-confidence, self-worth, integrity and..."
learning and living, self-discipline, self-confidence, self-worth, integrity and honesty, commitment, perseverance, responsibility, the pursuit of excellence, emotional courage, creativity, imagination, humility, and compassion for others." So we certainly saw that here tonight and with the students, so thank you for bringing them. Sally, appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I think we should always defer to you and give you a little more time. I'd also like to thank Ms. Reimers, and I would also like to thank all of the school board members. This is a great group, it's one of the best groups of folks that I've ever served on, and it's a caring, compassionate group of folks that really, really do work well together to make great decisions that affect our school system. So thank you very much for what you guys do. Do we have any material for board review?
We do not.
Then I think it might be a good idea to adjourn.